I'll call this meeting to order. This is a legally constituted meeting of the Towne and Challey Planning Board. Legal notice of this meeting has been posted in the Gates-Challey News and on the bulletin board in the front vestibule of the Town Hall. If you could, please silence and turn off your phones and your pagers. And please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
... Congratulations to the body of the United States of America in a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board and unbar.
In the event of an emergency, please use the exits at the front and the rear of the room. We will proceed with the agenda and the order it was published unless otherwise stated. When called, please proceed to the podium, state your name, and if you are a representative and applicant, indicate the applicant's name. Review the details of the application. Planning Board members and side table participants will address questions and concern to the applicant and their representative. For the public hearing portion of the meeting, upon completion of comments from the board and the side table, anyone wishing to comment on the application will be heard. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized by the chairperson, stand and state your name and address for the record. Please speak so all can hear your comments and address all comments and questions to the chairperson. I'll now introduce the board members and the side table participants. To my far left is Joe Defendis, Matt Emmons, Al Hallaby, I'm Mike Nyhan, Glenn Hyde, David Cross, and Paul Blozier. At our side table, I have our Planning Board Council, Matthew Piston, our Building Department Manager, Paul Wanzunreid, and our Town Engineer, Michael Hanscom. Our recording secretary tonight is Sandra Hewlett. So there'll be a change in the order in which we'll hear these tonight. We're not going to be hearing Application 2 and 3. I know there's a lot of interest in the site plan, but the reason it is on here, we're going to leave the public hearing open for next month, but we are simply going to declare ourselves lead agency for seeker, purposes of seeker. And then we will go back to Application number 1, which is the subdivision approval. It's not the site plan approval. So with that, the application of Gizzy Real Estate Holdings LLC, 3850 Buffalo Road, Rochester, New York, 14624, owner, for preliminary site plan approval to construct a 4,050 square foot medical office building at property located at 4415 Buffalo Road, Lot 2, in the GB District. And the application of Gizzy Real Estate Holdings LLC, 3850 Buffalo Road, Rochester, New York, 14624, owner, for preliminary site plan approval to A, construct three two-story residential multifamily buildings with 20 units; B, convert existing two-story medical building into 12 residential multiple-family units at property located at 4415 Lot 1 and 4423 Buffalo Road in the RM Districts. So with that, we intend to declare ourselves lead agency. There's no information, new information we'll be sharing tonight. Which would start the coordinated review. So for based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application to be an unlisted action, the Planning Board will send notice to interested parties and declare our intent to be a lead agency. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a vote?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. So this will go for a coordinated review, and you can be placed on the agenda next month. Thirty days is the window for that.
Yep.
All the interested parties will be notified of the application, and then they can make their responses based on that for seeker.
Great. Thank you.
And then for Application number 1, application of Gizzy Real Estate Holding LLC, 3850 Buffalo Road, Rochester, New York, 14624, owner, for preliminary subdivision approval of two lots into one lot at property located at 4415 Buffalo Road, Lot 1 and 4423 Buffalo Road in the RM District.
Good evening. I'm Chris Schultz, representing John and Joe Gizzy for the Berkeley Parks Project. This is the subdivision that basically removes an existing property line, so we merge the two parcels that were recently rezoned as residential.
Chris. Chris.
Chris.
I'm over here.
Yeah.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry.
You don't register very deeply, so, sorry.
Really? How's this? Does that work? I'll start over. I'm Chris Schultz. I'm representing John and Joe Gizzy on the subdivision, actually re-subdivision, for Berkeley Park. This would be the basic elimination of a property line, merge two parcels, corresponds to the area that was rezoned recently to multiple residential. So a simple subdivision. It follows a previous subdivision that was approved by the board, where we're just, in this case, creating one parcel out of two.
And I believe at the last meeting, we tabled this due to the fact that we didn't have a letter indicating the property owners, and I think that's a time that has been satisfied, correct? Okay. We can move forward with that. Joe, do you have any questions?
No.
Nothing at this time.
Nope.
No question.
Chris, it might be a dumb question, but you say you're removing a lot line on the one side, the multifamily side. You won't need any variances for the subdivision itself?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thanks.
All any questions? Side table comments, any?
No.
At this time, the public hearing is open, so anybody who would like to make comments on the subdivision? Okay. Seeing none, I'll...
As long as we put a culvert...
Sir, could you stand up and just state your name and the address for the record for us?
My name is Bill Polikusen. I would imagine if they could put a culvert or something between everybody, there are a lot of problems behind that Buffalo Road area with water when certain times of the season, every year.
So that is something we'll review with the site plan, which will be next month. Thank you.
I didn't put your address, sir.
Pardon me?
I didn't put your address.
Oh, 4424 Buffalo Road, next door.
Okay. Any comments relative to the subdivision?
See...
I'm confused what it is we're able to speak on tonight.
Just the subdivision, not the site plan.
So just the line?
Removing the line that goes down the middle of the RM District. Kind of a, right. Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Will we be allowed to, even though we're not going to vote on proposals 2 and 3, will we be allowed to speak on this too?
Yes, we're leaving that public hearing open. You'll be able to speak next month when they come back on that hearing, on the site plan.
So nothing tonight?
Correct. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion.
So I got...
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Any further discussions? That middle line, we're just removing the middle of the RM District. Okay. In that case, I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency as far as seeker, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
I also vote yes. So this is approved? Subdivision is approved? So with the coordinated review, just so, you're all set for the night, you had nothing else to say?
Thank you.
Okay. Just for the coordinated review, Building Department will send out letters to multiple agencies that will be able to review the application, provide us with any comments. We have to wait 30 days before we can hear the application again, so that's why we'll be back next month, and you'll be able to make your comments if you have any at that time. Okay? Thank you. Our next application is for discussion, which is the application of King Park, 2022 LLC, Andrew Vieira, PO Box 170 North, Challey, New York, 14514, owner, for preliminary site plan approval to construct a total of eight buildings. Six buildings 80-foot wide by 200-foot long, and two buildings 80-foot wide by 100-foot long at property located at 30 King Road in the LA District.
Better than me. Yeah, this one, right?
Yeah.
This one? Okay.
Okay. My name is Bob Boyden. I'm project engineer with Land Tech. And also with me tonight is Andrew Vieira.
Hi, I'm Andrew Vieira, owner of the property.
So, just I'll give you a quick overview of what we're doing, and we're really here to get the board's feedback and generally see what we need to do to move forwards with the approvals. And I have a color rendering there. It's pretty, pretty simple, but, so the property that we're building on is about 18 acres, and it's on the east side of King Road. So, just, we have 490s to the south, and properties, obviously, King Road has water, gas, electric. We plan on tying our sanitary sewer in up at Roberto Drive, so we'll be running a force main from a pump station north on King Road up to that point. We did do wetland boundary survey last year, so we had that delineated, and that's shown on the plan, which is really in the northern property, which we don't plan on developing at this point. And we're also showing the 100-foot buffer from the DUC wetland, which we will be staying out of. The plan is, and maybe Andrew can talk to that more, but the plan is to really have the developers gonna build his, you know, the first building will be for his business. The rest of the buildings will be leased to other businesses, and, which obviously are going to be consistent with the zoning. Our current plan, we have there shows about, shows 16,000 square foot buildings and two smaller, 8,000 square foot buildings. And those sizes may vary a little bit as we get into the project and see what the demand is for the areas and what kind of businesses want to move in here. So we will definitely stay under the, you know, the maximum lot coverage, which we're way below that now, but, you know, we'll stay, stay below that requirement. So we'll have, the darker area that we have down the center is really a paved area that's going to have parking and be the main driveway for the buildings, and then the rest of the area will be eventually be a stone parking for larger vehicles and contractor storage and that sort of thing. Setbacks, we'll be generous with those. We're staying quite a ways away from each of the property lines, and because King Road is a county road, we'll have to maintain 75 feet minimum, which we're staying beyond that. And really, our plan was to maintain the existing vegetation around the outside of the project and to keep it as a buffer to the neighboring properties and, you know, kind of maintain that, you know, wooden look, you know, all the way around. So I guess the other thing is, I had here was the front, you're going to have a gate on the front, so it'll be accessed with a, tenants only will be able to access the property. And that's all I have to say. We did receive the Monroe County planning comments, and I didn't really see any issues with that, and we're, you know, we're here to hear more of what the board has to say and what the staff has to say, and then we're going to really move forwards with final plans and, you know, just get the site plans to the point where we can build the project.
Joe, any questions?
Will these be, excuse me, will these be single occupancy? In other words, you anticipate one business going into each building? Is that how you anticipate working?
Well, so, hi, I'm Andrew Vieira. I'm the owner. I own Rochester Earth, Inc. It's a site contracting company that we do mostly public work for schools and towns, the city, VA medical centers, stuff like that. So we have typical site work equipment, dump trucks, excavator, bulldozer, and it would become the new home for Rochester Earth. One of the buildings we would plan on taking over, but the other buildings would be for other, we would want to target like small businesses, specifically skilled trades, subcontractors we work with, like masons, plumbing companies, fencing companies, landscapers, that sort of thing. And the idea of this project would also be to, it would be flexible where small business could take one bay or it could take multiple bays. It would also serve for a place for small businesses that are operating out of their houses. It would create a place for them to go, a place for them to grow, create more jobs, that sort of thing. So, yeah, to answer your question, it would be divided up, you know, tailored to the size of the business and how much space that they would need. But we would maintain ownership of the property, and we would rent them there. That way, we could, you know, make sure everyone's keeping it organized, their stuff organized, keeping it clean, and that sort of thing.
Okay. I'm all set.
So I think the thing that's confusing to me is the, all the gravel, all the stone, right? I see the paving, and honestly, before I saw that, I kind of looked at this, and it kind of looked like, almost like Bob forgot to delete some things out of the CAD file before he printed, because they're like floating off to the side. So I read it, and I see it now graphically here depicted that it's stone. So how, how are you proposing to drain that? To, I mean, to take care of all the stormwater, and it just seems like a lot of...
Well, it definitely, you know, definitely a bit of impervious area we're creating. So we were creating a stormwater retention, water holding pond on the north side there prior, you know, outside the buffer area, the wetlands. We will have to put in several bio-retention areas also, and that was part of that green strip in the center was well sheet flow to, you know, the center area and the median, create bio-retention. And we'll definitely, I'll be, like everybody else, be complying with the New York State stormwater regulations, and we'll require a SWIP and a full design on that. So we'll, between water quality ponds retaining and keeping the radar on off the same, we'll also be adding water quality features throughout the site.
Yeah, I guess, Andrew, I hear your, kind of your vision for the whole thing, or your master plan for the whole site, and the only thing I guess I would be concerned with is there's just not a lot of green space, right? So it's just a lot of stone. And I mean, if you came in here and said, "I've got 10 tenants, and this guy's going to store this here, and this guy," you know, and this was all graphically like depicted and figured out and approved, then I get it, but right now, it just seems like, it's just like, stone.
Yeah, I kind of agree. It looks like there's a lot of stone there, you know, and the amount of yard space that a company would need would kind of be specific to them, you know?
Yeah.
It were, you know, if they had trucks or they stored material, that sort of thing. But, yeah, the way that we designed it, as well as, we kind of keep the entrance and the main road going in so that, like, all that stuff ends up behind the buildings, so that, you know, it's like neat when you pull in and most of that stuff is hidden by the buildings. And most of the stuff, you know, yard-related items end up behind the building. Try to keep it neat. But could that area shrink down quite a bit? Definitely, you know, if there's a building that doesn't need to take delivery, you know, from a tractor trailer or something that needs to, you know, swing around in the back, it could definitely get smaller. But I think this was just kind of a rough idea based on the area we had.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's all I got for now. Thanks.
Just to expand on that a little bit further, I guess, looking at this thing makes me concerned that, you know, how are you going to control somebody that comes in here and all of a sudden they got 14 trucks that are in various states of disrepair just starting to pile up out there? I mean, there's got to be, we've always been sticklers on this outside storage stuff, and, you know, I don't want it to end up being a big collection hole for all these...
I agree.
...iron.
Yeah, I totally agree, and that may be something where in the lease, we can kind of spell out, like, you know, a max amount of vehicles, or, you know, just make sure that it's stuff that gets used regularly and doesn't just end up like storage where stuff just accumulates over years.
I think to ease the fear of this board, I think you're going to have to come in here with some sort of concrete plan on how you're going to do that. So keep that in the back of your mind. As far as fire protection, is there fire suppression systems in all these buildings along with fire hydrants on site?
We haven't gotten that far yet, but we would plan to meet whatever code that we have to...
Talk to the fire marshal.
Okay.
If there are hours lighting, security lighting?
Yes, there'll be lighting. It will be gated. As far as hours of use, we are going to target the skilled trades companies, and the majority of these companies will work Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 3:30. Those will be the busiest hours. So as far as any traffic it may create, noise it may create, it'll, it'll end up, you know, mostly be in between that window. The gates would probably stay open during those hours, and then maybe after like 5:00, they would close and open back up at like 6:00 or something in the morning, is what I was thinking.
Automated ga, and just throwing questions out there, automated gator, is, will it be keyed, so somebody has to get out and physically go through the gate?
Automated.
I guess that's all I got for right now.
You see a need for any variances at all?
What was that?
Any variances? Do you see the need for any variances based on the LA District?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you.
Oh. See the need for any variances?
Oh, variances, oh...
Zoning board variances based on the LA District.
I should have said that before. Our intent is not to have variances.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right. How about lighting? We have lighting in the entire parking area, just on the buildings, light packs?
Yeah, we'll have lighting, you know, yard lighting, and, you know, maybe a lot of that stuff goes on like motion, so it's not on all night.
Okay.
Also kind of add the security, safety.
Okay.
Definitely wall packs and such around the building to light that up.
So it doesn't spill off the property, that type of dark sky compliant lighting, okay? All right.
Especially with the buffer, the wooded buffer around it, I think, you know, it'll shine down, so...
You'd be building this as needed, or do you plan on developing the entire site and then looking for tenants?
I would like to build as needed.
Okay.
Do have a couple, like, letter of the tenants, of people interested, small businesses that are interested in it, but we would definitely start with our building first, which we would plan on taking, pulling in furthest to the left. But, yeah, build them kind of as they...
Okay, is somebody at your business all day? Is there an office there?
Yes.
Will the business itself of leasing and maintenance be handled out of that office?
Yes.
Okay. And you'll be doing all maintenance, you'll be, you'll own it, you'll be responsible for all maintenance, all the buildings, all the roadways, the, okay? All right. The hours of operation, I think you went over, the gates you went over, building construction, how will these be built? What are they going to be made of?
So we would like to build them pole barn style. Be a pole barn style building.
So metal outside, metal roof?
Yes.
Windows? Red doors?
Windows. We would probably put a small office for the business, or at least build it in a way where it could be built out, if that's what the company's needs were.
Okay. Okay. Just the only thing, just, is to have a plan when you come back as far as hours of operation, what the lighting's going to look like, obviously, and, you know, what you're going to be permitting for outdoor storage, as I quote Al said, we try to keep that to a very minimum, and what kind of landscaping you're going to have. This is the area that's been cleared on King Road, right? It's already been rough brush hog type?
Correct.
Is that the size of the space, or does more still have to be removed?
Um, no, that's...
It's pretty much the size of the space?
Yeah, to the right hand buffer, and then what we left around the perimeter is what's going to stay.
Okay. And then the other thing, too, is you do have residents right across the street, so the hours of operation will be important, especially with backup beepers at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning or 11:00 at night?
Yes.
All right. I don't have any other questions right now or feedback to give. In terms of like waste management, do any of these potential people you lease to have any hazardous materials or anything that'd be treated special?
No, not that I can think of from just a skilled trade standpoint, you know, contractors for building.
Okay. That's all I have.
So I guess I'm just, I'm interested in Matt's comment about the proposed gravel areas. It seems to be a lot of gravel, and I just, I guess I'll look to the side table, maybe not right now, but in the future, if that's considered as lot coverage, because it certainly looks like there's more than 40% lot coverage if we take into account that gravel, which could have equipment on it, that sort of thing. So let's keep that in mind going forward. And building height?
16 foot.
Yeah.
That could handle 14-foot overhead doors.
But not 50?
No.
Max in the, in the LA zoning is 50, nowhere near, nowhere near that, right? No, pole barn? Okay.
Yeah, pole barn, 16 foot, except the 14-foot overhead door, which anything that could legally go down the road could end up being pulled inside.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
My only concern was the gravel. There's a lot of them.
Yeah, I would just want to say, definitely when we come back in with the next set of plans, we'll be more defined with our gravel areas, where our bio-retention areas are, all our stormwater quality stuff will be on the next set of plans you see, so, yeah.
Any comments or offers for the side table?
Just a couple of questions. So you're going to be bypassing three or four houses with your 14 for the sanitary? Pure Waters may possibly ask you to try to service those houses since you're, since you're going by them. Would you be, would you be open to that at all? For the sewer, that is.
There's, I'm sorry, Michael, there's no sewers on the road right now, is that what you're saying?
I don't know for sure.
Oh. Because you gotta go all the way to Roberto Drive? That's the nearest sewer?
Yeah, the closest manhole's on the corner of Roberto.
Okay. So there's no sewers down the road, then, I would assume? All right. So I think your comment is, if you're going to be installing that, they may be asking you to permit residents to connect, is that right?
Yeah, that's a possibility.
So a large enough main to be able to do that? Consider that when you're drawing this up, that they're going to ask you to permit all the residents out across the street from you to connect to that main. And where would you put the pump? The pump house? Is that on the drive? I didn't...
Straight out front.
Is it the little run, oh, right up near the driveway there?
Yeah.
The little building near the driveway?
The little, little building near the driveway?
Up near the driveway.
All right. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Also, are any of these buildings going to, I know you're, they're going to have any loading docks or anything like that?
We plan on all grade level, but as we see what these are in the first couple of buildings, we're getting a lot of requests for loading dock. I'm not sure how we would pull that off with a pole barn.
Just asking.
But it's possible. We would plan on being able to get the people who are getting this...
One thing to note, when you prepare the plans, okay, so these are 16,000 square foot, basically warehouses. They would come underneath that for the, for the parking requirements, which is like one space for every 400 square feet. So each building, under the code, would require 40 parking spaces. So if you choose not to, to construct them all, you need to at least show them as landbank parking somewhere on the site. Another thing under the parking code, that when you have these type of commercial buildings, is it require, for a 16,000 square foot building, I believe it requires at least two loading areas where you can park an 18-wheel truck to load and unload for the building. They have to be reserved, reserved, areas that are reserved for that. They're like 14 feet wide by 60 feet long, I believe. Just to take that into consideration when you're doing your layout. And that's per building, it's not just two for, for the entire facility. You know, like you were saying earlier, just make sure you have, provide enough space for the bio-retention, the green infrastructure work. I think that's all I got. Thanks.
Anything else? Am I reading this right, that you're going to run this force main along King Road?
That was the plan, yeah.
So you're going to cross under CSX's tracks?
Yes.
Okay. Have fun.
We've started. Thank you. We've started the process.
I'll be interested in finding out if we're actually on your directional drill, or if I make you put a crazy name.
I'll use you guys as references, though.
Yeah.
To Mr. Hallaby and other board members, the storage aspect of it all, typically in the LA, we've limited, if not restricted, outdoor storage. On a building that's 80 feet deep, I would wonder why we would want outside storage for anything. Okay? And when you come back for planning board approval, you'll be coming back for a special use permit. Okay? You're, it's a somewhat of a warehousing and distribution facility, but it's, and there's, it's either that or a public storage, so that's why it's the use is of similar character. You'll need to do that. And you said there was going to be offices in here, so there's going to be, there'll be restroom facilities, but they're built out as needed. And you also said it's going to be pole barn?
Yeah.
You might want to have your design professional check out the building code on that and how you're going to, because that may trigger type 5 construction. That size may trigger sprinklers. Okay?
Anything else? Any other questions? Anything else you want to?
I don't have any questions.
What's your timeframe? What's your plan?
Time frame to, hopefully we can make something back.
Come up with a plan, yeah. I'm sorry?
Yeah, by next month.
By September.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be October.
Yeah.
Planning board deadline was this past Wednesday, so we'll see you in October.
Get working now. Get working now, so it's complete. All right. So is there anything else? Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask a question, or are we not to that part yet?
Which will be October. We have a public hearing on this. All right.
All right, thank you.
You too.
Other business, meeting minutes? A motion for the July?
Got one correction. Says that I was present.
You were there.
I was not present.
But you're, you're there in spirit.
Sandy was trying to get you extra credit.
Talked to you all night long.
That's the only problem with it, I found. But if they want to pay me, that's fine, too.
Motion to accept with that one edit.
All right.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I also vote yes. While we're not hearing, you're welcome to give your comments to them while they're still here, even though we're not hearing it as a public forum. I'm sure they would love to hear that.
Yeah. I mean, that's, like, that's why they're here, is to get feedback from people. I just, just don't want to open a public hearing at a non-public hearing event.
With that, meeting, any other business?
No.